Good evening. It's Monday, May the 20th. We're in the Governor's Room of the Community Center. And this is the regular meeting of the St. Peter Board of Education. And I'd like to call the meeting to order.
So moved.
And would you please join me in standing and saying the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. To get going, we want to consider and adopt the agenda before us. We're using the blue copies. This does require a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is adopted. If we have members of the audience who wish to speak to an agenda item when we get to it, there are cards in the back that you can fill out and present to Becky. And when we get there, we will allot you time and opportunity to speak to that issue. Next, we have tonight our consent agenda. And as per our habit, I'll read into the minutes our consent agenda and we'll carry on from there. Tonight, we are approving the regular board meeting minutes of April the 15th, 2019. We are approving the special board meeting minutes of April 30th, 2019. We are approving a board study session minute of minutes of May the 6th, 2019. We are approving the special board meeting minutes of May 13th, 2019. We are approving bills of $1,736,402.83 for April and wire transfers of $3,200,547.58 for April. We have a number of personnel items. We are accepting a monetary gift of $4,104.38 from St. Peter ambassadors to be used to enhance security in the district. We are accepting the resignation of a part-time physical plant support coordinator for St. Peter Public Schools effective April 12th, 2019. We are accepting the retirement of the school nurse for St. Peter Public Schools, Mary Powers, effective May 31st, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a social studies teacher at St. Peter Middle School effective May 31st, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a paraprofessional at Hoffman Learning Center effective April 25th, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE Tier 3 physical education teacher for St. Peter Public Schools for 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE elementary special education teacher for South Elementary School for the 2019-20 school year. This is also a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE physical education teacher for St. Peter Middle School for the 2019-20 school year. This is a new position created as a result of the 2019-20-20 St. Peter Middle School master schedule. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE elementary physical education teacher shared between South and North Elementary Schools for the 2019-20-20 school year. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE science teacher for St. Peter Middle School for the 2019-20-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We're about half done. We're approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE Spanish teacher for St. Peter High, St. Peter Middle School for the 2019-20 school year. This is also a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE social worker for St. Peter Middle School for the 2019-20-20 school year. This is also a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE health teacher for St. Peter Middle School for the 2019-20-20 school year. We are approving of a six-week medical, family medical leave request from a teacher in the Early Childhood Special Education Program from August 19th, 2019 through September 27th, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at South Elementary School effective May 17th, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE elementary school counselor at South Elementary for the 2019-20-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 1.0 FTE special education teacher at North Elementary School for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are accepting the resignation of the superintendent of schools, Paul Peterson, effective June 30th, 2019. And we have a high school diploma. Dr. Peterson?
Yes. Mr. Chair, members of the board, on a regular basis, students who complete graduation requirements in atypical fashion are names that are brought to the board to be recognized. And so tonight, it's our pleasure to recognize Julia McIntyre. Ms. Ingeldinger has indicated that she has met all the requirements for her graduation from St. Peter High School.
Very good. Does any member have anything from the consent agenda they want to poll?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to poll 6A and ask the ambassadors to come forward.
All right. While the ambassadors are coming forward, is there anything else? If none, a motion to approve the consent agenda would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, minus a. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. A motion to accept this gift.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the gift from the St. Peter ambassadors in amount of $4,104.38. And I'd like to speak to the motion when the time's appropriate.
Very good. For a second?
Half of that, actually.
Half of that.
That's what I said, just half of that.
Yes.[465.12][465.12](Laughter).
We almost had a Becky.
I know.[469.31][469.31](Laughter).
Well, I'll second that.
And we have a second.
Half of that.
Very good. Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a while ago, the ambassadors let me know that they were interested in helping St. Peter Public Schools, if they could, in any certain areas. After some discussion by members of the board, I was, I asked and I was allowed to go speak to their group meeting. And I made an appeal for help in an area that the board has identified as a priority, school security. And one of the areas that we needed some assistance, revenue assistance to purchase, was in the purchase of a special radio. All of our other buildings had been provided a radio that would give instant communication and even if the lines were down, telephone lines were down, if the power was out, the radios would still allow us to speak directly to the St. Peter Police Department. And I believe the Nikla County Sheriff's Office also, the dispatchers. So that hopefully we'll never need it, but if we do, we can have instant communications to help with the security of our students. They were more than willing to come forward with that revenue. And we have two members of the ambassadors here with us tonight. And this is really important that you completed all the other buildings had the radio. Now all of them do or will do, will have it. It's very important that we do that. So thank you to the ambassadors. And they're always there when somebody in the community or part of the community needs help.
Gentlemen, would you like to introduce yourselves, please?
I'm Jason Harrell. I'm the current president of the ambassadors.
Hello, I'm Kurt Rice, secretary of the ambassadors.
It's a very welcome thing. We appreciate your support tremendously. We know how much you do that isn't involved in providing people with checks. And we welcome your involvement and your continued support. It's been fantastic. Would you like to say something for people to watch over and over for the next few weeks?
Well, Bob said it very well. This is a gift that we're happy to and honored to be able to give, and we hope it's never ever used. So it's like by an AED unit that you hope you never have to use, but it's very important to have. So we're happy to contribute towards this cause.
Thank you.
This one is designated for South Elementary.
All right. It's designated for South Elementary and half would be $2,052.19.
You got it.
All right. Bob, would you like to accept on behalf of the board and get a photo with these guys?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Did we vote?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, fellas.
What?
Never mind.
You want it there or by the flag, where'd you like to go?
By the flag.
Sure.
Good running, Ken. Drive this again.
Okay, eyes this way. See you anymore?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Before I was at the National Honor Society thing, that's why it's late.
No worries. Next tonight, we have, as part of our regular agenda, the student spotlight. And for those of you who can't be here live and in person, you're missing stuff because this is really truly show and tell. And I'm not going to steal their thunder, but I had a lot of fun standing outside the building for a little while earlier tonight. So Ms. Ingeldinger?
Yeah, I am happy that I could fly down the hill from NHS, right behind Mr. Leonard, to make it back to introduce these guys, Cole and Mitch. I started, I started visiting with them about their project like only about a month ago. And the amount of excitement that these two guys and their advisors, Ms. Lilienthal and Mr. Reeser, have for their project and their organization, the FFA, is amazing. And so I was really excited to have, have this month to be able to feature these guys and their organization. So thank you for being here tonight.
Well?
You guys can talk about what you have up there.
So I saw, him and I saw a thing in a, in a magazine about a tractor restoration competition sponsored by Chevron. And we brought it up to Reeser about maybe Gene if we can find a tractor to restore.
We brought it up to him about, just about a month ago, right before school was over last year.
Yep.
And he thought it was a good idea. So we started early last school year. We brought it into the school about August. And then we had district internship first semester. We worked on it an hour and a half every day. And then after that was over, we had it pretty well complete mechanical wise. We just had to do some of the like finishing up and painting and sandblasting and all that stuff outside of school.
It's actually my grandfather's tractor. He bought it off of a farm all by Lysore County, or in Lysore County. Bought it with five other tractors with him and my father. And he said we could restore it. It's still his tractor. We restored it for him.
We had it up at the state FFA convention last month.
Showed it there in front of the career booth. And what, 6,000 kids walked by it, I think it was? Lot of compliments about it and, you know, good.
And share the competition with the...
Yeah. We're going to enter it into the, enter it into the National FFA Tractor Restoration Competition sponsored by Chevron. And if we, if we make it advance in that competition, we bring it to national convention in Indianapolis.
It was just, it was nice to have the shop to work on it and all the nice area and everything.
We had to, he had to make, well, he had to make a few parts on the bridge port and on the lathe. And we had a lot of nice tools, really great to work with.
And the tractor that you refinished is a?
1936 Farmall F-20.
1936 Farmall F-20. And for many who are familiar with agriculture, there's quite a debate about red and green Tell us about this tractor's color.
So this tractor is, it's a Farmall, which is, everybody says is red. But when this tractor was made, they were, they came from factory with this gray. And the next, this is a '36. And in 1937, this same tractor went to red. And this is actually, like it's the last year of having the gray and the first year of having the rubber wheels. Other than, they used to have steel wheels.
It was still optional steel wheels, but this one, as far as we know, came with rubber from the factory. So it's kind of cool.
It took us, they, in 1936, after they started using red instead of the gray, they discontinued the paint color that there, that it is now. But we searched the internet for probably a month looking for different paint codes. And we finally found a paint code. And then it was another three weeks that we had to try to find somebody that could make the paint code. And we ended up having to go to New Ulm to get the, the paint. And this is the closest paint that we could get to the original color.
And as an eyewitness, it is, got all the original deckles on it and coloring and it's not dripping anything out from underneath it. It's nice and tight. And like I shared with these guys, my grandfather had one of these Farmall F-20 with a two-row mounted picker on it. And I actually got to see it work when I was small. So it's quite nostalgic to be able to visit with these young men and their advisors about it. Great project. So happy that you've been able to blossom this program, both of you, Mr. Reeser and Ms. Lilienthal, to, from just a few kids who did a little of this and maybe a little of that, to dairy judging, now this restoration program. And I know the breadth of the program is much broader than that, but it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great segue, Mr. Carzer, because we have a small presentation tonight. Both Mitch and Cole, if you could stand by, Dr. Peterson, please.
More pictures, I think.
We would like to present Dr. Peterson with his honorary chapter degree. He was very instrumental in starting our program and developing it to what it is today. So this is our chance to say thank you.
Thank you very much. That's great.
Okay. All right, Steve. Do you want to go?
Did you bring me green bucket too, so you can have my hand?[1085.83][1085.83](Laughter).
No? No.
You'd have trouble explaining that in Mankato next week, I tell you what.[1093.66][1093.66](Laughter).
Thank you for allowing us to come to the meeting and present what these young people are doing. It's a tremendous opportunity to work in this district, being my second year and working with Ms. Lilienthal. And having the support of Ms. Ingeldinger and the school board and superintendent makes our job very easy and allowing us to take kids and allow them to prosper in our new facility. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd just say one, one item about, about the ag program and FFA. Our board knows this, but people who are watching at home may, may not realize, this is, and Ms. Ingeldinger certainly knows, and the kids out at the high school, this is a really big program out at St. Peter High School. And it has not been all that long in the, in the making. You know, hiring, bringing Gene on board, and then, I mean, moving from one teacher, one advisor to two. When you look at those pictures in the paper and online that Kurt Hildebrandt shares, I mean, there are dozens of kids engaged. And like you mentioned, this is just one, one piece of a very large program. And it's, it, it has already, people have taken notice of the great work the kids are doing, advisors, principal that says yes to, like, yep, let's go for it, let's do it, let's keep doing it. That's, that's what, and the board's support of students and putting them in highly relevant opportunities to just shine like this does, is much appreciated. So, great job.
Tim?
And as a former president of the FFA in St. Peter in 1986, it is great to see all of this going on. Just as a side note, if you need a further restoration project, I may have a couple.
He caught you, he caught us right away.
They are green, if that matters. Anyway, it is exciting, so.
I saw a thing out at the, at the high school a month or so ago when you had that Ag Food Table Day thing.
Farm School.
Farm School, yeah?
Yep.
There was a, a thing going across the electronic screen. It said that the FFA was the largest student organization in St. Peter. Is that right?
That has, as a, it's not as a...
As an advisor?
The way FFA works is that it's a intracurricular and not extracurricular.
Okay.
So we are the largest intracurricular student organization.
All right. Very good. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So when you start that up, we'll hear it, won't we?[1263.58][1263.58](Laughter).
You want to load it right away on the next one?
Yeah, I think so. We're going to move into our action items because our student representative is busy, like so many of them are. And if the board would allow, I'd like to move number five to the top.
You'll take it right there.
If that'd be okay. Is anyone, is everyone okay with that?
Right.
So, action item to, under consideration at the moment would be the approval of a contract for an additional school resource officer at St. Peter Public Schools. And Chief, do you want to come up? And Tom, to the table, in case we get any questions, comments, that sort of thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Peterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, as you all recall, the board has had a strategic priority this year to implement safe and secure initiatives and to look at all elements of our safety and security program that contribute to a safe and caring environment for our kids and for our staff. The board has been very active in this strategic area all year long. There have been many highlights and things that have been looked at, the establishment of a security committee, moving to enhance lockdowns, the MDE grant, a successful writing of that grant. We just saw something earlier today where the board has actually been out in the community making a case. And we've also had, you know, contributions from people stepping up to help reinforce this important part of, of our schools. Another part of that review or of that initiative has been to review our school resource officer program. We conducted stakeholder surveys within our, with our faculty. Our security committee had a chance to review those. The security committee spent significant time looking at the job description of our current school resource officer. And then once that was finalized, moved into discussions about what will it take or what does it take to help continue to improve the safety and security of all of our schools. As a result of those conversations with the security committee, a recommendation was made at that level to move towards contracting with an additional officer with the city of St. Peter. In reviewing that recommendation and being a part of that committee over the last year, I support that recommendation. And I also know that Mr. Meeks, as a member of the security committee, spoke about that quite eloquently at this board study session a few weeks ago. And so if there are any questions for myself, or Mr. Meeks may have a statement to make tonight, or if anyone from the local PD can also answer any questions that people may have.
Okay, thank you. This requires a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval for, of contracting for an additional school resource officer for St. Peter Public Schools.
And how long a time is this?
One year.
One year. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, just briefly.
Yes, please.
I'm not going to repeat everything we talked about at the, at the study session, but I just think that it's important to do this. It's been one of our goals, as we just spoke about earlier, about school security, the security not only of our students, but of our staff and of our visitors and people who attend events at this, at our facilities or on our school grounds. This is a good idea. It's a one-year contract, which all of our contracts are in this area. We've spent a lot of time, the staff has and the board has, on developing a new job description and an allocation of time of the officer or officers if this passes. And I would urge you, yes, vote.
Ms. Vicki?
Yes. Well, I, I met with, with Mr. Peterson today and we had a really nice informative talk. It was very good. I do have some concerns. I am concerned more that it's more of a discipline. And I want to shy away from that. I think that the officer, it is good to be there to protect the school and to protect the people, but I think that as far as the discipline, I think the teachers and the principals should be more involved with that. But otherwise, I totally agree. I think it would be a good position to have another resource officer up there. So I guess I would vote yes for sure.
I'll let you do that in a minute.
Okay.[1588.16][1588.16](Laughter).
Anyone else? I think it's really, you know, when we had our, the old configuration, we had about 50% of the kids in the schools were in one building. And Officer Tom was able to interact with about half the kids in the district just being in one place. And you can't be in more than one place at one time. And, and now with the, with the new, with the new facility, and we're being spread out a little bit more, we're further away, you know, it, I, I know it's about 3,000 steps to get out there. I don't know how many miles it is, but you know, we're, our middle school is kind of more centric to town. It made it easier to get from place to place. And it, time is precious in the event of, of a serious event. And so I, I think it, as Bob says, it, it makes sense. And Chief, we've got a great working relationship with you and with Officer Tom, and we appreciate that. And you know, we're looking at our principals and at you guys as to how to make this work. And I, I'm all about what Vicki says. I think, you know, we got to make sure that you're dealing with stuff that you're supposed to be dealing with and that you're not getting drug into disciplinary kind of issues that need to be handled by principals and teachers. And, you know, that you stay on, you stay where you're, in, in your area and our people stay in their area. And between the two, we cover those kids pretty well, I think. And so...
And I can kind of speak to that if you, if you would like.
Please.
I think, my belief is, Ms. Hager, when she was at the embed school, things were different then. And I was used as more of a disciplinarian, especially in that environment. I can tell you, things have changed. I believe that we do have a separation between discipline and we do have a separation between law. If a teacher says, calls me to come and help handle a problem, I'll come on a law enforcement capacity. If I, but the position is no longer, in my belief, a position of discipline. The, the principals do a very good job in handling the disciplinary action. If they need me to stand by on a safety reason, then I'll go in and, and stand by with them. But I don't believe that I'm in any way handling any kind of really discipline in the school. If it's time to enforce the law, that's the time that I go in. But not to go in and say, you will not do this because it's breaking the rules. Granted, I go through and if there's somebody screwing around in the hallways or something like that, I'll tell them to stop it because I am a member of the faculty as well. And I'm doing that as a member of the faculty, not a member of law enforcement.
Very good. So Chief, we got, this is to start when? Beginning, before school, right?
Well, hopefully by the beginning of school. It's difficult, it's a challenge for me to hire someone in that period of time. I'm hoping to do that, but hiring right now is a challenge everywhere.
Well, you take all the time you want to get the right one.
Well, we're gonna get the right one.
Yeah, so the, the question is, well, my question, the intent is to bring someone from the outside, a new.
No.
Enforcement, no?
No, you must have five years' police experience to be a school resource officer. You have to know your job before you can, can. And part of that process is, is, you know, the district will have people involved. If we, you know, have people interested in doing it or else, it's an assignment. It's not a, a promotion or a separate position. You know, that's how Tom ended up here. We then have go, we require a, a psych exam, a second one. They always give one when they're hired, just to meet kinda what our goals are for the position. So just in hiring a police officer now, it, it takes some time. Hopefully, we'll have a police officer hired by the end of the month to fill a retirement we had several months ago. But recruiting is very difficult now.
Yeah, I think it is. For a lot of things.
But I, I just, if I could indulge you for a second, Mr. Chairman. I, I really appreciate the ambassadors. We've been working on communications as part of this whole kinda security issue. And the, the shooting in the STEM school in Colorado communications was huge. It turned out to be a lifesaver. They had radios where they could directly communicate with the police in that school. So it's very important. The other thing, I, I believe, the last two school shootings we've seen, because certainly that's the primary role, these, these guys, it is to provide security. That's gotta be job one. The last two schools' shootings we've seen, the STEM school being one of those, I think we are seeing a turning point due to how we're training staff and students finally. You saw, what did you see in that, in that STEM school? A student stopped that shooting. That's how they're now taught. That's the last resort. And it saved a lot of lives. So I'm very hopeful as we go forward to see less and less of this happen. More students will become involved quickly. You know, the most recent one, it was a, a coach, football coach, I believe, who, who stopped the thing before it started. And people will forget that next week. And the only other thing I would add is that the partnership's awesome. It's great. You know, we share in the responsibility, but when things don't work out, we also have to take responsibility for that.
Very good.
So just back to the last question, that we, in your mind, and we don't know, but personnel for this position, is it, hasn't been selected? We don't necessarily know who that officer would be.
Correct.
Likely it would be a new officer to us.
Right.
Okay.
A five-year officer, at least to me, probably longer than that.
Sure. Yeah, all right.
Anyone else? All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Let's jump back up to number one on action items and get back to working over Mr. Regner. And we'll start with our approval of the 2019 revised budget. Dr. Peterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Our business manager, Tim Regner, is here for his annual visit on the revised budget. The preliminary budget was approved last June, adopted by the board. And here we are many months later, looking at revised numbers as we near the end of fiscal year 19. Work has already started and the finance committee will be busy again here in the next few weeks, looking at the preliminary budget for fiscal year 20. But that would be getting ahead of ourselves. We need to finish this budget first, so with that, Tim.
Well, I think in the, in the packet, I think it's page 47 and 48 are the, the two documents that, that deal mainly with the revised budget. If you look at page 47. And we went over this, hopefully, pretty in-depth at the finance committee meeting last week. So, you know, if there are additional questions, but I'll try and not get as deep as that. The first page that you've seen before is kinda just an overview, page 47, of all the different funds in the, the district. Column C is basically the fund balance as of last year's audit of $630 for all the different balances, the unassigned and the general and the food and the debt redemption and those. Column D is the, well, we're estimating to be revenues for this fiscal year, FY19, as we call it. Column E is then the expenditures for the year. Column F is, we have some transfers in between, we try to identify them there. And then column G is the projected fund balance at the end of the year. The main one we always usually focus on, or the biggest one, is obviously line number 10, the general fund unassigned balance. And as you can see, we started the year with about $4.9 million in there. We're projecting revenues and expenditures and transfers out. And then we're projecting a fund balance at the end of the year of $4.1 million, which we try to meet the 60-day fund balance goal, which we set, was set by the board here probably two, three months ago. If you look on then, there's more detail on that than on page 48, which is the, is the rollout. It's this year from the rollout, which kinda starts with the balances from the beginning of the year. And then we, we take the revenue and the revenue from last year on line 121, put that in, and we add to that the things that we know are gonna happen this year, that increased revenue or decreased revenue, if there's a one-time item last year. You know, one of the biggest components, obviously, is the 2%, the state increase, the formula on line 122. And then, then some other things that happened during the year that we know are gonna change it. And we come up with the total revenue for the year. And then we do the same type of thing on the expenses on, on page 48. We take the actual expenses from last year and then we add to it the number of things that are changing this year, either plus or minus, if there's some things we did last year that we don't do this year, we take away, or some of the increases we add to that. So those are how we kinda come up with the numbers, the more in-depth numbers that we have on, on line 10. Like, you can show there on the bottom of, on that, the fund balance goal is like $4.1 million and $53,000. And we're trying to meet the goal of 60 days with the expenditures and revenues that we're projecting for the year. Then the, the next few lines also have to do with the general fund. If you remember, over the years, we've assigned some different funds, funds for different purposes. Yeah, I kinda call it like a savings account, you know, for severance and trust and, you know, some infrastructure items that we've done and for the operation of the new school when we started it. And those are the things we transfer money kind of in and out of to the, the unassigned fund balance. And you can see those numbers, how they work their way over there. Then we have a, a few minor things that are in the general funds, the student activities. By minor, I mean just smaller amounts. And then on line 31 is our total of all the general fund type items. Going further down the list, we have the capital expenditure plans. It's actually a, a part of Fund One, but we split it out to better identify it. It basically has two components right now that are left. On line 34 is one that we've talked about a lot in the past and you'll probably see again in August here, is the LTFM, the Long Term Facilities Management, or Maintenance, excuse me. We, you can see in there, we do have a negative balance and the, we're projecting, at the beginning of the year, we're projecting to be, the negative be a little bit higher at the end of the year. That has to do with the roof that was repaired at the middle school this past summer. And looking at that, that's kinda been the plan. You can spend ahead when you have a major project like that. You know, in reviewing a lot of the other districts in the, the state, a lot of school districts took advantage of that because there was a lot of deferred maintenance that was needed. It's, it's been a very good program so far for us. The next one is, is our operating capital. Basically, the, the major purchases that we do, I know you're gonna be talking about some of the curriculum and stuff later on tonight, and that's where a lot of those funds will come out of. That one may adjust a little bit depending upon some of the curriculum decisions that are made that have come up since we, we kinda started this. But you can see, we, we've got a, a little bit of a balance in there for that. You skip down to lines 44 and 47 is our food service and our community service funds. The food service fund, we're projecting about revenues and expenditures roughly equal for the year. If revenues come in, then we're allowed to expend some ex, expense some extra items to there, utilities and those type of things that when we have a, a better handle at the end of the year, we do. One thing that we talked about a little bit that is a little bit different for the food service fund this year is the eight days of school that we did not have, were eight days of not selling any revenue on that. So the, the numbers are probably gonna be down just a little bit this year because there was 5% less days of school. The community service fund, line 47, we're projecting a little bit of a deficit there, expenditures over revenue. We did that last year too and we came out a little bit ahead. I think it'll close up a little bit this year. A lot of that has to do with some of the school readiness expenses. There's a couple different components in there and we went over that, but it's a good fund and it, that's, it's carrying it, that on that. Capital project funds, that's the one, if you remember, we levy for that most years. When, in last fall, was our last year of that levy. And we're basically spending a little bit more funds next, this year. And then this coming year in FY20, we'll have about $550,000 or $570,000 come in and we'll finish up those projects and that, kinda that levy will basically sunset 'cause that'll be the 10th year that was passed 10 years ago. The bond referendum then, line 51, that's, um, basically money left over from the school. There's still a few projects being done out there. And basically, that's gonna spend itself out through the next, it's retainage and items that they're trying to just finish up some, some smaller items there. So that one, we're hoping that'll get closed out this year, but I don't think that'll happen. There'll still be some items that'll, that'll fishtail into next year. Line 54, debt redemption, is basically the payment on the bond for the school and remodeling projects. Pretty much, the revenues and expenditures are, are the same. Sometimes they try to over, over levy a little bit in case all the, the taxes are not paid. So you have money to pay the bond. And the trust fund are basically our scholarship funds. If you see this year, the revenues are a lot higher than the expenditures. That's basically due to the two contributions we had from the Gilbertson and the Rolsoff estate, estates earlier in the year. So the next year's going forward, you'll see the opposite. We, you all went to revenue this year, next year, the expenditures, when we start to spend more of that money, will, will go down. So you can see then, basically, in the bottom line 61, our, our total, you know, our, our fund balances and the projected at the end of the year for that. And each of the funds itself are pretty much self-sustaining. The revenue, you know, one has maybe a little bit more expenditures and revenues, but otherwise, it's, it's probably in fairly solid shape, as solid as we've been for a number of years. And we're working on, like, Dr. Peterson said, we're working on next year's. We'll have in June for the, the rollout and then go, go from there. And again, I think you, maybe you guys know that too, but the, the House and the Congress and legislature came to agreement. So it looks like we'll get 2% for the coming years, which we'll, we'll plug into the formula and, and start moving on there. Again, as we talked, enrollment is still the biggest driver of the budget, so. And we're taking a close eye at that for the kindergarten class and those items. So, you know, I went over it pretty briefly and there's a lot of numbers there. Any specific questions? I will sure take.
Questions for Mr. Regner or Dr. Peterson?
Several of us were at the finance committee meeting and that was a robust discussion, so we appreciate that.
A motion to approve would be in order?
I'd make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 revised budget.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. The revised budget is approved. Next item we have is the approval of breakfast and lunch prices for 2019 and 20. So this would be beginning August 26th, I believe. All right? Dr. Peterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tim is gonna stay up here and talk us through the brunch, breakfast and lunch recommendations for next school year. This is again, an annual item before the board. The finance committee also had a chance to take a look at this last week and provide a recommendation, so, Tim.
The, the food program is a federal program and with that, they help you or they give you a formula to help set your prices.
No, they don't. They tell us what we need to set the price. There's no help involved.
The formula helps us set that, yes, you're correct. So basically, we run our numbers through the calculations and we come up with a number and we, we got a little bit of latitude where we can charge it to, but we have to come up with an overall price. And this year, the average price we needed to come up with was, was $3. So to do that, we ended up raising the prices by about a dime for, for all three levels to the $2.90, $3.00 and $3.10. It's a little bit higher than last year. Last year, we ended up not having to raise it at, at, at one level, at the, at the smallest level and we ended up a nickel on the dime. And then we, they give you a little bit of latitude, you can round down like a cent or two, and we did that last year. But because we did it this year, we hit right at the level and that's why it, it's looking like going up a dime to keep us consistent with where we need to be at. You know, they do require you to do this because of, you know, we get, you know, they do help us out a lot with the free and reduced programs and reduced lunch prices and some of the other payments that we get. And they, they do have a caveat, they have a lot of requirements because of that, so. We're just trying to follow them, I guess that's where we're recommended doing. Along with that, we, to be consistent, we raised the breakfast prices 'cause they're going up by a nickel. So, I guess that's what our recommendation is and I don't know if you have questions. Lunch equity calculator that we, we run the numbers through.
A few comments, if that's right?
Yeah.
And I think this is pretty straightforward, again. This is something that we pretty much have to do and, and don't have a lot of wiggle room with. I would just encourage every member of the public that, that does have kids in the district to fill out that federal free and reduced lunch paperwork. I think those, those guidelines are probably different than people think they are and they might qualify and, and might not know it or might not think that they qualify. And that's not just free or reduced lunch for your kid. It, it really benefits the district and it's, it's, it's definitely not a handout. And the more people that fill out that paperwork and the more people that we know are eligible for those programs, the more federal funds we receive. We're eligible for different kinds of, of grants and other things. So I would just encourage everyone to fill it out. It's beneficial to families, it's beneficial to the district. We don't penalize kids whose account balances are negative. I, I think that's really important. There's been a lot of stuff in the news lately about people not being able to graduate or other ridiculous things and our district does not do that. However, there are kids that do have negative balances for whatever reasons. And, you know, if your, if your kid's graduating and you're, it's the end of the school year and they have a positive balance and you wanna donate that back to the district to help those kids or you're watching at home and you wanna make a donation towards this, you know, I would encourage you to talk to the district. That is a possibility if, if that would, if being active in that role would, would make you feel good about being a community member, you know, I would encourage you to talk to the school district, so.
Thanks, Ben. You brought some very good points there, especially on the, the application. We, we do our best to get it out to everybody and we, we have it available online and all over. But if for some reason you, you don't get one or don't have it, 'cause it, it does help the school in, in a number of ways besides that and it, you know, we really encourage everybody that, that kid to fill one out and, you know, it's confidential and, and we go from there and, but that, that's a very great point.
I'd like to say too, that it's not time limited either. You can do that all year long, you can apply for that. So it's not just the beginning of the year and you lose out, just keep on applying.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve breakfast and lunch prices. I'll make a motion to approve breakfast and lunch prices for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. You know, this is one of the longest-running programs, this free and reduced lunch program is one of the longest-running programs related to education. It's well over fifty years old, and as people have been talking about how integrated this is into the school system, it it reaches so far as to determine what class of sports your teams play in based on the number of people you have receiving free and reduced lunch. That's how woven into the very fabric of of education this particular program is. So please take advantage of this and others, and Ben, that idea of the of the, you know, gifting back your balances or, you know, taking making an angel donation to help cover somebody, fantastic, you know. That's what we did with our foundate or with our gifts and donations committee, is we found a way to accept dollars for just about anything, and, you know, if you if you want to do any of those things, we we have a way to to take to take care of that and to get it to the right place, so. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries, and our prices are set. By the way, it's eighteen dollars a year if you're just having lunch. Price went up eighteen dollars for a year, one hundred and eighty days, ten cents a day. That's. Can't eat anywhere else for that, I don't think. Next, we have graduation.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm going to substitute for Ms. Engdinger tonight, if that's all right. Annette is, well, was at NHS, then was here for the student spotlight, now is at the choir concert. She'll probably have another activity after that, so it's just that time of year. However, the May meeting is an important one for about a hundred and fifty-plus seniors because it's at the May School Board meeting where the board accepts the tentative list of graduates that will be participating in commencement exercises at the end of the month. So graduation's on May thirty-first. It's a a great night of celebration, and historically, here in St. Peter, the board has accepted the list and approved those for graduation pending successful. There is a week of school left. Many students are still generating credits, some faster than others, and grading day for some will be a really fantastic opportunity to reach that twenty, that magic number of twenty-seven credits, and off they go with their cap and gown. So with that.
Motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the tentative. Is that what they are? Pending graduates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries.
Is it too late to add two more weeks of school? Some may want that, Ben. Gonna miss those school nights.
Next item we have under action tonight is the approval of a curriculum improvement program that has been on the railroad track for years, and so we finally get to to take that up tonight. Dr. Peterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Principals are here tonight to provide a final overview of the curriculum improvement plans and process that the board had an opportunity to do a deep dive into at the study session a few weeks ago. The instructional program committee had an opportunity to do that about a month ago. It was at the study session where we were joined by some energetic and motivated and enthusiastic teachers who are excited to get going in implementing new curriculum and standards. But tonight, we'll hear brief overviews from each curricular area, see if there are any questions before the board is asked to consider acceptance of the curriculum plans.
All right, I will go ahead and start with ELA. This past year, we've had the opportunity to.
Just for those watching.
English.
What does ELA mean?
English, Language Arts. So we're talking reading, writing, spelling, all of those components with literacy. So I had the opportunity to work with a group of individuals, we actually started this two summers ago, and decided that that important standards work needed to be done before we could move forward. So over the course of the last year, we have spent our time identifying our essential standards and our learning targets, and then aligning our instruction so that there is definitely a scope and sequence that goes all the way from our pre K pre-K programming through twelfth grade. With that said, the next thing that we moved on to was looking at resources. And here is where we started to do a little bit of a divide at this point, because when it comes to resources at the five through twelve grade level, they really start to develop units and are developing programs where there's there's not quite as many people that are teaching the same subject. Where at the K four level, we start to diversify a little bit more. And so at this point, our K twelve, excuse me, our five twelve people will be continuing their work throughout the summer on developing those units and that assessment piece that goes along with it, while the K four people will be busy embracing a brand-new literacy program. So the program that we are recommending is called Fontis and Penel Classroom. It is, if you do any Googling on Fontis and Penel, you will discover that they are the gurus of reading. And the money that we are asking for this evening is really to purchase books. It's quality literature, systemic assessment system that goes along with it that we will be using K through eighth grade, along with training this summer, heavy heavy training for our staff this summer on using that assessment to guide our instruction and then teaching our teachers how to use this new system. But we're very excited. We did a couple of site visits, and there was just an overwhelming response from the teachers who saw it in action that this is the direction that we need to be heading. Any questions? And read? Okay.
In the mathematics area, this turned out to be at the K eight level, about a four-year process. Two years ago, when the high school opened up, nine twelve, did a review of their math program, ended up making curricular improvements at the K eight level. We wanted to wait, continue to unpack the standards and understand just exactly what we what we needed the students to know with alignment to Minnesota math standards. This year, we moved forward with investigating three curricular tools, all three highly rated. Our teachers overwhelmingly, at the K five level, were very pleased and chose Bridges to Mathematics, and at the middle school level, the supplemental course to that is called CPM. So at the board study session, we had shared that I had recommended a two-year rollout with those curricular tools, like kindergarten all the way through eighth. I want to make an adjustment to that. I would support the fact that getting the professional development place, getting all the resources in place and moving forward with that. So at this time, just that adjustment has been made to let's move forward and get everybody on the right track with these new curricular tools, kindergarten through eighth grade, so that now, after four years, we'll have a complete curricular improvement tool set all the way kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade.
And the health review or the health curricular review process started last summer with a review of standards, review of literature and best practice health instruction. We identified our strengths, our limitations, and then developed a plan for improvement. And overall, our health teachers are very happy with the current curricular resources that we have, but we do want to continue to look for ways to develop community partnerships with people around the area and and to look for ways to create real-world health experiences for our kids. And as part of that curricular purchase that we hope to make is a set of eight mannequins to help with our CPR and first aid training and a couple of instructional videos to supplement that.
Questions from anyone this time? Motion would be in order?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. This is a significant investment. I if I said three hundred thousand, that'd be pretty close, wouldn't it? Just one of the largest, might be the largest single curriculum investment in my time on the board, and it has been several years in the making. This is, we are buying books, but we're also buying electronics, electronic formats, electronic access, so that we have the best of both worlds, the thing you hold in the hand and the thing you can you can do on your on your tools. It's been worth the wait, and I'm very pleased, Mr. Dougherty, that we're gonna get and go. It's a struggle, I know, for people, but anything worthwhile is, and and our kids only get one chance, so I'm really pleased that that you're making that adjustment.
We really appreciate the support of the board. You know, it is like, like we had mentioned, it's a lot, it's a heavy, it's a heavy carry, it's a heavy load, but we always feel very supported by this group.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Go get them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item we have on the agenda for action item tonight is the consideration of the approval of an interim superintendent agreement. We have the agreement before you. This is with Dr. Jeff Olson for one year. We're very pleased that that Dr. Olson has considered coming out of retirement to serve our district again. We had a series of meetings, and in a special meeting, you authorized us to come up with an agreement, and that agreement is included in your packet. It is, highlights would be that it's slightly less than the total compensation that we have for Dr. Peterson by about ten percent, and most of those savings are in health benefits, et cetera, et cetera. This is a full-year, two-hundred-and-sixty-day contract, has, it's a very standard language, this this boilerplate language that came from MSBA, so. And I know Dr. Olson is excited to begin, and this does require a motion.
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. And the motion carries, and the contract is approved. That walks us right through our action items and brings us on to reports. We have our principals with us tonight, the superintendent, and ones around the table upcoming days. Hey, did you see the sunshine today?
Not much. I will tomorrow. All right, well, I'll go ahead and get started. It's kind of FFA, all about FFA tonight, because the first thing that I have to share is the fact that a week ago Friday, they brought all of the animals, all of their machinery, a little bit of grain, and they spent the entire morning at South out on the playground teaching the students about agriculture and what it means to live on a farm and what are the products that we get from a farm. And it's just, it's one of the best days. They come, Mrs. Winter feeds them breakfast, and all of the classes, it's it's meant to be a kindergarten activity, but they always invite the first grade to go, too, and it's it's just such a wonderful opportunity, and I'll never erase the fact that ever the sight of driving up and seeing the sheep running all over the hill. They did get loose one year, but they were all contained this year. We also have a special event going on this Thursday. It's really the culmination of our entire graduate portrait work on looking at careers, and our students will be performing as we look at all of the different areas within the graduate portrait, showcasing some of those gifts that the students have is one way to do that, and the arts is definitely one way to show some of those skills. So we will be performing on Thursday night. Concert begins at six-twenty out at the Performing Arts Center, so everyone is welcome. It's only about a twenty-minute concert for kindergarten, and then they will go offstage, and first grade will come on, so it's a night filled with lots of adrenaline, and we would love to have you join us. We only have seven days left of school, but as I list the things that we have going on or we have had going on in the last couple of days, it's going to continue to be a busy, busy week for us. The other event that we have that kind of aligns with our graduate portrait work is we have parents that will be visiting classrooms. They have volunteered to come in and share their careers and what are some of the talents and gifts that they provide to others and what are some skills that they had to develop personally and through their schoolwork in order to do their career. So that will be fun. It's always just fun to get parents into this into the classrooms. We had a literacy night last Tuesday night, and that was put together as a result of a grant from the St. Peter Ed Foundation. And so Eliana DeRimer, who is our ELL teacher, Kari Blyer, Reading Interventionist, and Kathy Johnson, our school social worker, all collaborated to put this project together. And it was just a night for ELL families to come and have stories read to them. There were some activities for them to do, there was some food served, and it was just a wonderful opportunity to open up our doors and get get the families into our building again. We also had talked about the arts. We had the regional art show last week, and all of the art teachers in the district showcased the work of students kindergarten through sixth grade, and there were two representatives from each of those grade levels that had their work on display, and it is still on display over at Bethany Lutheran College. So there was a reception on Friday night, and some of our students actually won regional honors at that event as well, so it was it was pretty cool to see them represent St. Peter in such a wonderful way. Next Thursday, we will have, excuse me, Tuesday, we will have our end-of-the-year parent council celebration, and the FFA will be there serving pizza, and it's, again, a wonderful opportunity for parents and kids to come and and gather one last time at the South Playground. We have some inflatables, and dinner will be served, so we'd like to invite everyone that would love to come and join us for that. It's just, we always hope for a beautiful night of weather, and so far, it has worked for the last five years, so we're we're banking on next Tuesday night to be a wonderful evening. We also have the environmental department of Tri County is providing climb theater for our students, and they will be coming and doing a performance, I believe that is next Tuesday as well, on what I'm using, not having waste within your foods, products. So we're looking forward to wrapping up our assessments and wrapping up our end-of-the-year activities and making the best of our last seven days together.
Lot going on itself, Mr. Grab.
Top that.
I I think you and I will need to reach out to FFA to let them know where our buildings are located. That tractor parked in the, right in the parking lot. All right, well, at North, we had not as much going on, but we had quite a bit. Last Thursday, we had the spring play going on at North, so just second, third, and fourth graders, Mr. Lenhoff, Ms. Mathiowitz have been working with, worked all year with about twenty students in all, stage crew, the actors, actresses, about one hundred and fifty people just at North in in the in the gym and on the stage, and it I think it's a great event. I think it's the kids, the students, the actors did a fabulous job, I mean, selling the performance. They they customize it a little bit, got to make it their own, sound effects and everything else, and popcorn even for the audience members. So we can eat in our theater at North. Added to the enjoyment, so we definitely want to keep that going. Also, you know, we always talk about in May, you know, learning looks a little bit different, you know, get outside the classroom, get, you know, go walk through the the woods next to North, go on a field trip. Third grade, second grade, definitely fourth grader doing things like that. Second grade always makes their trip out to the new Sweden Dairy, and it's always fun to hear the kids' stories because they got they have some wide eyes when they come back after being out at the out at that place. And we've had two two homerooms with this today already, and so the rest will be going the rest of the week, so can't wait to ask them what they've viewed out at the new Sweden Dairy. They they really love it. So thanks to the second-grade teachers for organizing those spring events. Third grade always likes to go up to the University of Minnesota Arboretum. They have a huge plant pro or science unit, so it's a great, it's a wonderful facility as long as the weather's cooperating with them, so they're going to head out there this week on Wednesday, I believe. We also want to thank, you know, the middle school band, sixth grades coming over to perform to the fourth grade. Students, again, Ms. Schumaker gets that going. Students, again, Ms. Schumaker gets that going, so that can really sell that middle school band program. And I believe we have quite a number of fourth graders signed up to be in the band next year, so that's, that's a great way to show kind of what that experience looks like as they continue on throughout the grades. Second grade family, student and family orientation was May ninth, so we had a lunchroom full of students and their families there. They travel around the building, and the second-grade teachers are there, specialists are there, and they help them complete a passport with stamps and selfie areas, and they get to know the building really well. Prior to that, they come over, just individual classrooms, and they do tours of the buildings while the building is full, but then that night, on the Thursday of that week, they get the whole building to themselves. So we want to thank Mr. Rebar for helping that transition, organizing that. We realize, moving forward next year, we might have to split over two nights. It's a lot of people. So we're gonna split that over two separate evenings, just to get everybody through. Otherwise, we've realized in the last couple of years, like, it definitely is a large group of people, so we're making adjustments as we go. And, you know, we have, we have field day coming up. We always have to have field day at North, and I get to take a special part in it this year. You know, fourth graders always get a chance to, you know, dunk me in the dunk tank. They really enjoy, you know, sending their principal down to the depths of the dunk tank. But prior to that...
Do you use a desk calendar invite on that?
Let's see. Prior to that, though, I get to be made into a human principal ice cream sundae. So if you have any toppings you'd like to get rid of, you can jump over my, over my head prior to the dunk tank. Can't wait to see what that water looks like.
And at this time of the year, you know, as everybody knows, we're kind of living in two worlds. You know, we're finishing out this year and preparing for next year, and a couple of the events that we'll highlight tonight really emphasize that. So on April twenty-third, we invited our incoming fifth graders in for an orientation night, where we spent the evening talking about the day in the life of a fifth grader, getting to meet some members of the student support team, and then taking a tour. And then on Thursday, we're shipping our eighth graders out to the high school for a morning of orientation, a really cool event that the student support team has organized out there. They're gonna start the day with, like, roundtable discussions with high school kids. So all of our students will be sitting across from high school kids and be able to ask them questions and get to know kind of how that works out there. They'll take a tour, and then they'll finish off the morning in the auditorium or the Performing Arts Center, meeting some of their ninth-grade teachers. And then the last one is, we have our final concert of the year tomorrow night, starting at six-thirty. It's our fifth-through-eighth grade choirs out at the high school.
And then they're playing sports every night, doing whatever else, as we try and catch up from the seasonal malaise. All right, questions for anyone?
And don't forget, we celebrate summer birthdays, so that is also throwing a field of change. Six or seven cupcakes a day, so.
You pack them in at the end?
Everyone that's celebrating birthdays, and it's like, oh, we gotta quick.
Maybe do the after.
Yes. Miss me.
No. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Peterson?
All right. Three, three quick things from me, the first of which is truly a shout-out to our principals. You heard a little bit about how the end of the school year is wrapping up in all of our buildings. But I have to tell you, as I, as I go around and walk the halls and talk with teachers and talk with our principals in their sites, I mean, there really is an intentional effort to keep meaningful experiences happening right to the end. That's something that we talk about at the admin table. You know, we want to make sure that our kids are, as Doreen said, they leave school just with the best of feelings and are feeling like they can't wait to, well, maybe they, maybe they can wait a few weeks to come on back. But, but we appreciate, I appreciate especially what our principals and teachers do to keep things moving forward right to the end. We teach to the end, and then we wish people the greatest of summer. So thank you for that. Also wanted to mention that the district held its final Addressing Challenges Together Community Engagement Session earlier this month. Again, had many, many dozens of community members engage with us in a three-part series about who are we and where are we going as a community as we continue to diversify. The focus of that night was really on what can we do right now, and what can we do tomorrow? And by tomorrow, we mean within the coming weeks and months and years. And those ideas are now kind of collapsing into some themes. Administrators and faculty leaders will have a chance to look at those and say, all right, what does that mean for the school district? But there's already community partners, the City of St. Peter, the Our St. Peter Group, also wanting to see those themes, to see where they fit into this really community effort to have safe and welcoming environments for everybody, whether it's at school or downtown or anywhere. So thanks for your support on that. Final item I'd like to mention is that this is Becky's final board meeting. And so I wanted to just publicly, I know that the board has a whole lot of, you know, relationships with Becky when it comes to email and accommodations, but it does give me an opportunity to just publicly thank her for her work with me over the last five years. She is always up for a quick text message, an email. When you work with somebody enough times, she walks into my office and says, now I know what you're thinking. More times than not, she's spot-on. So I appreciate everything that she's done for me and as we've been a team over the last several years. Related to that, you know, our principals have been, if they're not engaging in all the activities that they share with, they've been hiring. And it's so exciting to listen to our principals talk about who they're finding. They're finding top candidates, they're getting their top picks. And usually, after we talk a little bit about the person, I always see, you know, do you want me to help? And they're like, nope. They wave me off because they know just how exciting that is, especially when you talk with some really great people and there's the potential that they're gonna work with your kids. And then when they say yes, it's just, and then you read their names here and away we go. So like John said, there's, there's a whole lot of time and attention pointed towards next year. Related to that, Sarah Janofsky is here tonight, and talking about top candidates. Sarah was top selection for the Becky Gravel position, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent. We're really excited to talk with Sarah in the next several weeks about transitions and getting her up to speed. Becky and her have already had a little session, a mini-session before the board meeting about what the board meeting is like. So like I said, excited to welcome Sarah. I know that the people at South are gonna be sad to see her move to the DO, but I can tell you that the board will be really, really pleased with her involvement and leadership at the board level, so welcome.
Board members? Thank you, Becky. Drew? Thank you, Becky. Slide your microphone over to her so she can talk. I have nothing to say. This is, this is the once-around-the-table when you're included. Oh, and I get to say something? Absolutely, you do. Well, I actually was thinking, it's odd that I get to go back to the very first job I ever had, babysitting, and say that I've used that skill at this level. And the next one...
John's on here, it's okay.
I know, I know. And the next one was waitressing, and I think I've used that one a lot when I've been here. And then when you go on to school and teaching, and who would've ever guessed I would've done this after all that? It was kind of a, that was a risk. But it's been fun. I've really enjoyed it. So now I get to, I'm gonna go into consulting, I think. I'll just do special projects, you know? So, you know, you can just, if you need help on something, you can just call me and I'll consult on that. And you got a special project, except for moving, I won't do that anymore. Be happy to help. So long as I can say no sometimes, or choose my calendar dates, that'd be great. I'm staying home on snowstorm days. Yeah.
Thank you so very much.
Oh, you're so welcome. It's, it's been a ride, I gotta tell you. Schools and referendums and lots and lots of food. It's, yeah, it's been very exciting, so.
We'll miss you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Anyone else once around the table? Well, we, as we've heard, we've just got a few days left of school. They are packed full, day, night, weekends, all the things that happen after that. Please check the website, look in the paper, take it all in, because just like that, it'd be, it'd be over. I believe before we have our next scheduled regular school board meeting, which is June seventeenth, I think before then, we start the Read and Feed program. So, you know, school will let out, and it goes for a week maybe, and then the Read and Feed program gets right back into it. You know, our buildings are there for that summer program, and we've got other programs scheduled, summer, used to be called Summer School, and those events going on. Again, graduation is Friday, May thirty-one, out at the high school in the gymnasium at eight PM. Our next board study session is set for Monday, June the third, at the Middle School Media Center. And then our next regular board meeting is June seventeenth, and I don't believe we have any committee meetings set between now and then yet at this point in time. Not yet. There will be policy. Yeah, but there will be. And those will be posted.
And there'll be a finance committee meeting, because we need to do the preliminary budget for fiscal twenty.
I think we do have a negotiations committee meeting also.
We do. We'll get those on.
So those will be on the website. Which brings us, my lady, to our favorite.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.